Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's June 3rd. Can't believe that, but it's June 3rd, 2025. This is the open business meeting, the Ada County Commissioners. Rod Beck is on, in Coeur d'Alene, but he's on the bridge with us. And I'm presiding. He's not present, but he's doing good work up there. So.
Thank you.
Any, let's see, let's start with, I'm present, Rod's here, Ryan Davidson is not here right now, so we'll go around the room for introductions.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Alex Murray, Gatorade Operations.
Matt with Caris Bula.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Our party operations.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Robin Swain, Procurement.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Amy Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
And our IT, Luke.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office, Beth Ma, Treasure.
Okay, so are there any changes to the agenda?
There are.
And Ryan, do you know what the changes in the agenda are?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move to amend the agenda to include an appointment to the Historic Preservation Council.
I.
Second the motion.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the agenda has been amended. So now we'll go to the volunteer boards, which is the first item on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I will move to appoint Michaela Owens to the Compass Regional Transportation Advisory Committee.
I second the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I have a motion on the one that was just added to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Boo to the Historic Preservation Council.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we'll move on to the unfinished business. Bob.
Good morning. So, Mr. Chairman, under unfinished business this morning, we have a couple items, the first of which is the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP 25036, Ada County Treasury Staffing Services for Expo Idaho. And the evaluation team has completed the initial evaluations for this project, but they would like to conduct interviews with the top four proposers for RFP 25036. Therefore, we would, we will need additional time to complete those evaluations and would like to request that this be retabled for final rankings and award recommendation to the June 17th, 2025 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, request to retable, so do we have a motion?
Well, first I'll make a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I guess that's appropriate motion before then. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now we'll go on to the business. The unfinished business was now approved to bring to the table.
And I'll move to table till June 17th, 2025. June 17th, 2025, final rankings and award recommendation for RFP 25036 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have another.
Yeah, we have a board. Another item under unfinished business, and that is the award of bid 25060, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Vehicle Equipment Purchase. And I do have a letter here of that recommendation, if you'd like to review it in the record.
Please.
All right, so, letter dated June 3rd, 2025, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 25060. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order for bid 25060 to the following bidders and divisions as the lowest responsible bidders. Our first awarded bidder is ERS Emergency Responder Services Incorporated, and they are being recommended for four divisions, the first of which is the Phoenix Division for $5,319.81, the Jodl Desk Division for $14,446.48, the Magnetic Mike Division for $1,306, and the Satina Division for $57,643.48. Our second bidder that is being recommended for award is Dana Safety Supply Incorporated, and the division that they're being recommended for award is the Havus Division for a total bid amount of $78,861.16. And our last bidder that's being recommended for award is Premier Vehicle Installation, and they're being recommended for award for the Sound Off Signal Division for $180,068.4. So those are the recommendations for those bidders. It might be good just to make a recommendation for all of those according to what the evaluation team has recommended.
So we can, we can do that all in one motion, just all of them together?
Yep, you have the letter there in front of you, so I think that would cover it all.
Thank you. So for bid 25060, do I have a motion?
I will move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid number 25060 to.
The following, those bidders that are listed on, on the letter there and read into the record.
Okay. To the companies that are, that were read into the record and listed on the letter from Ada County Procurement.
Do I have a second?
All right, second. Second.
I'll, having moved and seconded to award bid 25060, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Now, you're still on for new business.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under new business this morning, we have the opening of bid 25054, Ada County Sheriff's Office and Marshall Office Uniforms. And Robin is getting our Bonfire E-Procurement System queued up on the screen. And if you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed.
Please proceed.
We did receive three responses for this bid. And today will be read into the record the name of the bidder and the total discount totaled for each of the bidders that submitted the bid. So inclusive of that are manual, excuse me, percentage discounts, that will be listed up there. There'll be a multiplier that's going to be multiplied for that discount. And then the total will be at the bottom of what the total discounts for all of those manufacturers would be. There are two bid tables. The first is the discount table, and the second is the alterations table, but the award will be based just on the discount table. All right, Robin. So is it that, that bid amount on top is our total bid amount right there?
Yes.
Okay, so our first bidder is Curtis Blue Line, and they have a total bid amount of $36,424. Our second bidder is Skaggs Company Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount of $2,372,000. And then bidder number three is Uniforms to Gear Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount of $66,656. So those are our three bidders, and our evaluation team will need a little bit of time to run through each of these bids and to look at each of the discounts that will apply to each of those to make sure everything is in accordance with what they bid. So we'd like to recommend that this be tabled for award recommendation to the June 10th, 2025 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, the recommendations to table to June 10th, do I have a motion?
I'll move to table the award of bid number 25054 to June 10th, 2025.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to table till June 10th, bid number, consideration of bid number 25054. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Commissioner. Thank you. We'll move on to the next one, the Peddlers and Slitters Solicitors Licenses. We have one. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the peddler solicitor licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Rod, let us know when you have to, I know you have to leave maybe, so if you have to leave, just let us know.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. I thought, I thought you'd already gone. Okay, we have catering permits. Do I have a motion? Catering permits, licenses, new and license transfers.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the catering permits and licenses listed on the agendas and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a moved and second for the catering permits, the licenses, new and license transfers as listed on the agenda. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 There's a ratification on there I need to make a motion on.
All right, I'm ready for that motion. I didn't notice that ratification either, but go ahead.
I'll move to approve the five catering permits ratified by Commissioner Beck on May 29th, 2025.
I said.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to ratify the signatures on the, as listed on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now we have claims journal. I guess I'll add here.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated May 30th, 2025.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize payment of claims journal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we'll be forward for the post office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. We are anticipating that the ballot verifier will be live today for the May 20th election, and that should give the candidates, particularly in the Eagle Sewer District, time to review those ballot images and cast vote records to determine whether or not they want to pursue a recount. So we are looking forward to getting that information out there. And then the other big thing, of course, is budget. So that starts next week. Trent will kick things off at 9:00 AM on Monday. And immediately following this meeting, I will get you, as the board, the budget playground so that you can get in there and start messing around with different decisions, see how those decisions would impact everything. So our Auditor's Office has been hard at work getting all of that information compiled, and we're hoping for a smooth budget process this year. So that's all I've got for you.
That's good. I was just gonna ask you about the budget, I mean, the budget. But then, the, for the Eagle, how long do they have to review that before they can actually file a, a recount if they want to?
Yeah, so that deadline is the 16th of June. Mm-hmm, so a couple weeks from today.
And they've been notified about that or something?
Correct, yes. Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other questions for clerk? Rod, do you have any questions for the clerk?
No, no questions.
Since you just had breakfast with him?
Yep.
I did have breakfast with clerk.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second.
All, been moved and seconded to approve the personnel actions. All in favor, say aye.
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 And our clerk handed me enough to make sure I reratify it, I guess, the licenses and the alcohol licenses. Maybe I didn't approve those correctly last.
Okay, so you want to move that motion?
I'll move to ratify and approve the alcohol licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
So you ratified the ones that were previously signed, we just need the remaining ones that.
Okay, I thought I had gotten those.
No, it was just the, you just did the ratifications.
Okay, so the new ones?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
So we moved, I thought you did have that, I'll add one.
Well, just, just to be safe, we'll make sure. So I'll move to approve the catering permits and licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
All in favor, it's been moved and seconded to approve those licenses as listed on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now we're complete. I thought we were before, but that's okay. Tax cancellations, reassessors office first, I guess, if you want to report, then we have some, and then the treasurer's office on these tax cancellations. I'd like some explanations of both of those, actually.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We successfully have our assessment notices all delivered to the post office, so our appraisers are fielding phone calls. And at this point, we have a couple dozen appeals already, so primarily residential. And we do have two tax cancellations on the agenda, which are characteristic errors. So hopefully get those approved, and I'll stand for any questions.
Just as a clarification, these are called tax cancellations under the law, but these, as you said, are errors that we're correcting, correct?
That's correct, and they'll be adjustments to their last year tax codes.
Okay, so I have a motion in order.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now we have the treasurer's office explaining the adjustments for Idaho Power. Unless, e- either one of you can do that.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think that needs an explanation, especially since Idaho Power just passed a, their last notice, notice that we were gonna have our, they're putting a increase in fees before the Public Utilities Commission, so could you explain what we're doing here?
Sure, I'm happy to, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So Idaho Power owns what's called operating property. And that's, that's notable because it's operating property, they are assessed by the state. They are not assessed by the county assessor. So for tax years 2020, '21, and '22, Idaho Power and then also Avista, but Avista does not own properties here, they challenged the assessment by the Idaho State Tax Commission. And so their challenge proceeded through the State Board of Equalization, the District Court, eventually the Idaho Supreme Court. And at the Idaho Supreme Court, Idaho Power and Avista prevailed. And under their theory, essentially, the Idaho Supreme Court ordered that the values be reduced. And it was based on the uniformity clause under the Constitution and also what's called the 4R. It's a railroad revitalization and act. So under their theory, they prevailed. Again, the Idaho Supreme Court ordered that values be reduced. As a result, I'll also note, during those years, '20 through '22, Idaho Power did pay their property taxes. So as a result of the court order to reduce the value, there is a corresponding entitlement by Idaho Power that they, they are entitled to a refund or credit of their overpayment for those years. So these tax cancellations adjustments are to proceed with the, we're proceeding with the refund to Idaho Power. As you know, Ada County collects on behalf of all districts, and so each district does, is, will be charged for their proportionate share of this refund or credit to Idaho Power. And so those will be withheld from the districts. However, the districts do have the option under law to levy for, to make up for the amount that, their proportionate share of the overpayment. So again, it's based on litigation between the plaintiff and the Idaho State Tax Commission.
I don't know, the assessors also want to explain your role in that, which you didn't have, but.
Yes, no, that was an excellent explanation. And from our perspective, from the assessors, with the 4R, kind of following suit with that is that, you know, we try to keep our commercial values as close as we can to 100% because of that 4 adjustment and that uniformity. Otherwise, it can cause issues across the state with the, with all the other 43 counties. So that's one of the lessons we've learned from 4R.
Okay, so this, synopsis, we are ratifying a court order.
Correct.
We meaning the commissioners. We're not unilaterally making this decision on our own. To reduce property tax for the Idaho Power is a court order, and we're doing it based on a court order.
Grudgingly.
Yes, not voluntarily, grudgingly, but we're doing it based on a court order. Rod, did you have any comments on that?
No, no comments. I don't, I know what it is. Let's go.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, I'll move to approve the tax cancellation adjustment for Idaho Power, tax years 2020, '21, and '22, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the tax cancellation for Idaho Powers listed on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, again, with the explanation that this is a special note that people are receiving in their tax, or their Idaho Power bills this month, which I just received myself, I noticed that they've been, they're asking the PUC for a rate increase. So I wanted to make sure that citizens know we're not contributing to that increase voluntarily on our own in Ada County. Thank you, both of you. Do we have a treasurer's report?
Nothing in addition.
Okay, approval of the minutes, have a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have Expo Idaho events. And I don't know, can we do a motion for all of these, the exhibitors agreements, or do we have to?
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Expo Idaho agreement as listed on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're going to Parks and Waterways. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for the Parks and Waterways events. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now we have agreements as listed on the agenda. Do we have a motion? Or a discussion of any of those agreements?
Well, it looks like we're gonna have flying pig races at the Western Idaho Fair again.
I, I was waiting for that. I was gonna say, if you didn't.
That's the same one that they had last year. It was, it was surprisingly popular for just having little pigs run around in a circle.
I, I, I didn't go to, so I was curious as to how the pigs were flying.
I couldn't believe how popular it was. People love cheering on those little pigs. But, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I was gonna say, if you voted Indian Services. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indian Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated. dated June 3rd, 2025, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, now we have two miscellaneous agreements. Do I have motions for, I think we have to have motions for both of them.
I'll move to approve the workers' compensation stipulation and agreement for lump sum settlement and order of approval and discharge for case number IC number 2020-020806.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have easements of Highway District.
We have, anybody wants to comment on the, on the easements for the Ada County Jail project?
Sure, Commissioners, I can tell you what to route. So we've got two easements here. We have a temporary construction easement. The Ada County Highway District is doing some public right-of-way improvements along Alamo, and they're gonna be improving the foliage of our property there, so they just want legal rights to be able to do those improvements. And the second one is a corrective permanent easement. So originally, when we bought the property from Dairy Gold, there is a seepage bed that was required for the improvements along the road. That seepage bed is gonna land sort of underneath our approach road going into the Phase One site. And so what we've done is we moved it from the north end to the south end of our property so that in the future, we don't have to dig it up and dig up our approach road for access reasons. General, yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, ju, just as a note, in, in most counties, roads and bridges are under the purview of the Commissioners, but in Ada County, we have a separate Highway District, so that's why we have this kind of an agreement. So do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the easement agreement with the Ada County Highway District for Phase One of the Ada County Jail Expansion Project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any other items of business we have to take up? Okay, we'll be leaving. It's June 3rd, and Rod, you're still on the line? Okay. June 3rd.
Yep.
2025, Board of County Commissioners in the Emergency Medical Services District Open Business Meeting, 9:30. The roll call, all Commissioners are present, Brex on the bridge, Mr. Vangston and myself are here, and...
John Blake Paramax.
Was it the Duncan Communications?
And our loop, corner loop guy. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. New business, Claims Journal, do I have a motion?
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated May 30th, 2025.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you vote, Rod?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now we have the EMS update.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I only have one thing for you that Chief Ray may have covered, and that is a bit more information on GMT, the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Re, reimbursement. They gave us their drop-dead days, their alleged drop-dead days, for when we might expect to see the first payments. 2023 calendar year is going to be next year sometime. 2024, the following year, and subsequent years will be down the road into parts 2027, possibly 2028. The way I read this is a definite possibility of a firm maybe. And so we'll, we were quite happy to have not put this in the budget yet. We were considering the idea that GMT money would be sometime before the end of this calendar year, possibly right after the fiscal year, and we're happy to have not included it. When it comes, we'll deal with it then.
We'll do it appropriately then, yeah.
Right, that's it. That's all I have for you.
Do you have a question, Rod?
Nope, no questions. I wonder if all those cones recovered?
I, I heard there was one cone fatality, but we'll take care of it.
Total fatality.
Okay.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.